Okay.
Okay. Yep. All right, we're gonna open the meeting. Please take notice that this meeting is being recorded. I don't believe at this time there are any board members that are remote. So.
Nope.
Would not require. Any roll call vote. If in fact, the one member that's not here tonight comes on void, we will. We'll then. Enact the roll call vote. All right, so first thing we're gonna deal with, it's on the revised agenda. Well, first thing we're gonna deal with is we're gonna approve the minutes of the. The last meeting.
Make a motion accepted minutes of July 15, 2024 is written.
Second.
All those in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Please note that it was approved. All right, second item on the agenda is going to be a complaint that was filed. Regarding the open meeting law, I guess there's been a lot of these going around. With the change, you know, when we went through COVID and everything sort of went remote, was kind of thrown out there quickly. So there's been some actions recently by the state to revise the open meeting laws. And I guess we just weren't up to snuff quick enough for someone to. Someone, Patrick Higgins of Northport, Alabama. File the complaint. I'm going to, I guess I'm going to allow Jeremy, still the town administrator, to discuss it with us. Jeremy, would you like to take the conversation?
Hi, yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I apologize, I have a one-year-old on my lap who's not being cooperative, so I'll try to be brief. So there are responsibilities when the town receives an open meeting law complaint to disseminate the complaint to the board, meet to review, and then respond. So the select board has been recipient of a number of these recently as well, and we designated and voted town council to be the official respondent. So I would encourage the planning board to do the same. And then after, after your vote, I will communicate with town council tomorrow and have, and have them respond. But there were three violations noted for the July 15th planning board meeting, I will go through them briefly. The chairman didn't announce that the meeting was being recorded, and the chairman did not announce that there was a member participating remotely. I will note that the recording that's posted online is truncated in the beginning, so perhaps the board did do those things, it's just unclear from the video. So thank you tonight for addressing those from, from the top, I appreciate it. And then third, that the board did not conduct roll call votes on all motions as required when a board member is participating remotely. So you also addressed that tonight, and I just remind the board of their obligations going forward, that when a member is remote, either one or more members are remote, that roll call votes are required. My memo, you have a hard copy of it, but I can circulate it electronically, has links to open meeting law guides and educational materials and a schedule of upcoming webinars to more familiarize yourself with, with the law. So this is, this is my briefing of the board, and should you, should you vote to designate, town council can respond in an official capacity.
All right. Need a motion on the floor? That does need, you know, I'll, I'll present the motion. Motion is to designate the town council to handle the complaint for the planning board.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, Jeremy, it's approved by the board. Let town council handle it from here and. I'm sure we'll be advised of the outcomes.
Excellent, thank you, I will talk with town council tomorrow, I'll make sure the board stays abreast, and then the attorney general's office has, after 30 days, they can respond as to what our response is, it's a whole, you know, calendar-based move. So anyway, thank you all, and I'll let you know the outcome.
Thanks, Sharon.
Thanks, Jeremy.
Good night. All right.
I know. Well, you could do number three, site plan review for one north.
Well, we don't have, they're not here.
Well, let me explain, that was a wrong, we're in a transition period, as you know, Gail retired. A new person, I haven't even met her yet, she started today, that's why you're stuck with me, and not, and Dylan's off doing something else. And we erroneously put this on the agenda, you continued this to September 9.
Oh, so we don't even know.
So you don't, but if there's anybody here for one north.
If anyone's here for one north, we won't be hearing.
That was my bad.
That was an error. Yep. All right. So the only other item that I have is. Continue, the opening of the public hearing. I'll make sure Damon didn't jump on. Opening of the public hearing for 35 Cape Road. But unfortunately.
I'm texting the.
I don't believe they're here tonight.
I'm texting them. Justin, oh, wait a minute.
Maybe they assumed it was a.
I, I haven't talked to them. Since the.
I understand they're in a difficult position too, because our town consultant hasn't finished his report.
Graves is not finished, we have not heard from any of the department heads, so I did ask Dylan to send out another reminder to the department heads.
Okay.
Especially, you know, we like to hear from the board of health, the DPW.
So, Mr. Chairman, do you need to open the public hearing and continue?
What's that?
You need to open the public hearing for motion to continue.
Yes, we need to open the public hearing.
So you need to read the ad, right?
Uh, no, did I?
You did not read the.
Not read it.
We have it, you probably have it in that folder.
Spread it.
It's on the agenda.
Always on. Yep. Ah, the whole thing is right here, all right. Boy, you are, you are efficient, Jack.
I.
All right, I'm gonna open the public hearing.
I wish I could take.
Did you?
Either one. Jack doesn't have the media, the dates it was listed in the, this one does.
Somebody's here.
And then flying.
And.
Oh, it is Mr. Tim. All right, I'm gonna open the public hearing in accordance with MGL chapter 48, section 11. Notice hereby given that a plan, the public hearing will be held on Monday, August 12, 2024, at 6:00 PM, in person or virtual, in the meeting, Mendon Town Hall, at 20 Main Street, Mendon, Mass. To consider a site plan review to construct a 26,000 square foot warehouse and associated parking and drainage at 35 Cape Road, Mendon. The property is owned by Hoffert Ave Corp. Plans are submitted by John and I and B and L Design Group. It was in the Milford Daily News on 7/26 and 8/2. Required notice.
That motion.
You might want to make note, Damon has recused himself.
Yeah, we do have the. Fifth board member here, he's recused himself because he's involved in that project.
Believe I should probably be doing.
Yeah, I have, we have to use, we have to do the.
One sir.
Rule of.
Yes, because you're in a butter, I assume.
But we need, as under special permit, we need at least four members.
Members. Now, it can't be denied the right to have a hearing, obviously, the other board members are proposer, so. What I, what we need to do is I'll ask these questions of you, Eric, they'll then be in the minutes, the minutes are filed, and it's done. So first, we state that the board lacked the sufficient number of members necessary to take a valid vote as a result of disqualification of members due to conflicts of interest. So you have a conflict.
Yes.
We include the facts disclosed by each member which created your conflict. Your conflict is?
That I am the property owner at 3 Bates Street, which is.
Yeah, you're in a butter.
An indirect of butter.
A butter to in a butter.
Yeah.
Yep. We identify the legal requirement necessitating the board action, and that's because this is a special permit, it requires four members.
Yes.
And then lastly. That we also state that as a last resort, we have used the rule of necessity for those that were disqualified, so you can participate. So we stated that, we'll put these in the minutes, and Eric can now vote on any.
Does that require a board vote for that?
No, it's his conflict.
All right.
So I'll make a motion to continue the public hearing for 35 Cape Road, this September 9, 6.
Well, I'd like to hear from the applicant.
There's nobody here.
John's not on there?
I don't see him.
No.
Oh. It's Lonnie.
Hello?
Why, because he's probably talking.
Well, there's no one here to present the plan.
Now, you guys haven't received Jeff's.
No one's here, how are your brothers here, but he can't. All right. Lonnie would like to present, and he's on his way here.
Not gonna get finished tonight anyways without our report from Jeff Walsh.
Not at all, but at least the butters could hear what he was trying to say. It's your call, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, no, we'll. Is there anything else on the agenda?
Yeah, you could table this, and then. You could, you have to elect this CMR PC, this is on the other.
Already did that, didn't we?
Dylan, we got another notice, you have to do it again, I think there was a calendar flip on there.
All right, once again, if, because I'm entrenched with them, if you guys. Want to make a motion to have me continue as CMR PC rep, it's not usually something people run up their hand of. But I'm, I'm doing a lot of projects with them, so. Currently, and I'll, I'm gonna give an update on the bylaw review committee in a moment also. Yeah, I don't think these.
They're not working.
I'll, I'll try and speak louder. Yeah, if, since I'm entrenched with them, if the board doesn't mind, I'd like to be reappointed as the representative for the board, the CMR PC, Central Mass Regional Planning Agency.
Every, every town in the, in the Central Mass Regional Planning Area has a delegate, actually have two delegates that represent the town, one from the planning board, one from the board of select. And they have to be reappointed or a new appointee every year.
Just a good question as part of that, is there at any point? Any type of update or review to the board to see where the project is at, or?
As far as which project, I've got a few going with them, the board's gonna, the board will be directly involved in those projects.
So we have to vote with nothing else.
Hold on. The, the board will be directly involved with them as anything that goes to town floor has to be approved by the planning board first. As the bylaw review committee works alongside of CMR PC. The board will be updated. I'm the board's representative on the bylaw review, review committee, and you guys will be getting copies of the changes that have been recommended. CMR PC is undertaking the task of diagnosing and rewriting our bylaws, the bylaw. Bylaw review committee is more of, it's just an advisory role. Because they're the experts in writing zoning bylaws, I mean, they do it for the entire. Central Massachusetts, I mean, they're pretty much handling everybody's changes, and they have been. They've been steadfast. I just applied for an additional grant to rewrite the subdivision rules and regulations that they are very. They're expecting it to get approved, so we should have that grant coming down very shortly. And then in January, they're going to apply for us for an economic development grant. So we got a lot going on with them at this point in time, and I, I think it's very advantageous for town, especially with the. With, with the experience that they have, they're, I mean, this is their genre, they, you know, we're kind of in their wheelhouse. Utilizing them, and to be honest with you, it's costing town very little because we've been able to obtain these grants through them. So it's been very, it's been a great relationship. For both, between town amendment and the.
So I can add, at least since I've been here, I also. So I can add, at least since I've been here, I also, we participate. In the regional housing, uh. Efforts that they put together, so we're a member that, there's only like eight, eight towns and we share a staff person. To look at housing issues and things like that. Matter of fact, we're redoing our housing plan. Using CMR PC. Um, and that should be coming to this board in September, uh, a joint meeting with the Board of Selectmen. I think they talked to you about them.
Yeah.
Somebody did, but I didn't. I think, uh, Alana might.
Oh, they reached out.
Yeah. So it's, they're, I'd use regional, planners in small towns use regional planning agencies all the time. It's cheap labor.
Yeah, they're tremendous, yeah, they're tremendous asset to the town. But I'll make a motion to appoint Bill Ambrosino as CMR PC ref.
Second that.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
All right, passes unanimously, um. All right, uh. Well, I guess we can, um.
We're going back?
Yeah, we're gonna, uh, revert back to the, um. Um, the public hearing for thirty five Cape Road. Mr. Timmy, would you like to come up?
He's our engineer.
Yeah, I just don't know what we're gonna be able to accomplish tonight without Jeff's report.
Didn't get anything back to you?
Nope.
Nothing yet.
Yeah, I received anything. I mean, I can reach out to him and see where it's at tomorrow.
Just continue.
All right, why don't we do that? Hi.
Yeah, we're waiting on information.
Why don't we do that? Yeah. All right, I mean, uh, if, if there's somebody here from the community that'd like to ask some questions. Um, keep, you know, I'll, I'll open the floor briefly, but we don't have a lot of information yet because our consultant did not finish. Reviewing the project. So is, is.
I guess if you, if you want to do, want to show a rendering of what the building was.
I have it.
Yeah, if you wanna put it up.
If you wanna take a quick few minutes to that.
You can, but you can put it up. I mean, maybe they'd like to see it. And maybe if Lonnie could give us an overview. Hey Lucia, is that yours?
You don't have to, it's up to you guys.
Well, these people have showed up tonight. At least we'll be able to show them what it's going to look like. I might need your.
I don't want them to feel like they wasted a trip.
I had it up. Check your tabs across the top. You gotta.
That up?
It'll get bigger.
Oh, maybe, uh, rendering of the. Lonnie's helping me with tech issues here.
That's my job. I'm offended.
I forgot.
What do you need? I just wanted to, uh, just zoom in a little bit.
There we go, all right.
Make sure you're sharing that so the people remote can see it.
Yeah, I think that it's shared.
That we can go here.
Go down to the, uh.
No, no, he's already shared.
I've already shared.
This is shared from his laptop. I was just gonna, you can pop the share out. Just to make it.
Hey, can we scroll down to the, uh?
What do you wanna go? Right to the plan?
Yeah, that's probably it. Excuse me. I, no cross talk. We're in the middle of a public hearing. I like that. If we get people talking across, then the, the meeting breaks down. Uh, this is the rendering, um, that they're showing you of the, where the building location and the parking areas and the driveway. I don't know if either one of yous wanna speak on it or?
Yeah, sure. So Lonnie Tiniyo from, uh.
Why don't you go up there and just point out.
So here it is. This is Route one forty Cape Road. Uh, this space coming down into here. Uh, obviously, the soccer field is, is over here on this side. Uh, and here, here you see the entrance, uh, the in and out. These, these are the setbacks from the residential structure setbacks, which we've worked with the neighbors on to. Keep as much of this, we moved everything this way. Uh, we have the, the driveway coming in on this side, all of the doors. Uh, the overhead doors as well as the, uh, the smaller man doors are all along the front side. And only a small fire lane, uh, around the back for emergency vehicles if they have to get through. There's obviously emergency exits out the backside of the building, but it keeps all of the activities on the. Northern side of, of the buildings proposed. Just on a twenty seven thousand square foot building, twenty six thousand six hundred fifty square feet, uh, with additional parking down here. This is a common drive that we share with, uh, for the solar farms out back. And then there's some, uh, retention basins out here for, for drainage and whatnot. That's the basic of it. I missed anything? That's some questions, um.
Just where you just put your hand up. Yeah. Why would?
Okay, so if I. Actually, with a water problem, you, we are probably, this is gonna change, make it. Better. Because you're gonna have drainage basins down there that are gonna let the water settle into the ground. Um, you know, all the drainage is, everything is going down, the sheet flowing down that, down that road. A lot of the water, I don't wanna put blame on anybody. A lot of that water is based from this, from this solar farm, but. Well, okay, well. That's going down to behind gas though, but. Cause I doubled that for a lot of years, so, but there's a lot of water coming down where we are too, because it's just sheet flowing down the road. Yeah, yeah, well, I know, but that's, that's, that was. But you have problems with your, I, I would not walk down there, but you had the trees that were falling. You were in conservation, I think. Yeah, so, I mean, I, I know exactly, but you don't get anywhere with, with the solar people, correct? That they okay, because we have. I think this is, what we're gonna be doing there is going to be consult and taking all the drainage and putting it into a detention basin, so it. It recharge it into the ground in the detention basin before it goes down your way. So right now, the, it went, whether it's clear here on the driveway and whatnot, it's just, you know, gravel. So the, the water just kinda rushes all the way down. This will now, with, with the drainage system that we put in, we'll be able to pick up the water along the driveways and then they'll, it'll, it'll leach, I'm sorry. And exit out into these basins, which will then leach down on the ground and stop that water.
They're gonna have pelvis there capturing it before it gets to.
Well, yes and no. Massachusetts law says they cannot, cannot. Create any more runoff than what exists today. And it's our engineers, your engineer, who we hire using their money. Who tells us whether they're, it's gonna do what they say it's.
That never, that, that never got okay.
Well, this one will be.
This has, yeah, unfortunately, this has nothing, nothing to do with.
You have to understand.
You're, I. Is, you're assuming it's not gonna work.
You, you have to understand something.
Well, good, because Graves is excellent. He's not gonna, he's not gonna let this go unless it's the right way.
I don't know what is. I haven't, I haven't seen his report yet, so I don't know what he's gonna say. People have misconception of how a planning board can deal. We have a set of zoning regulations that we need to follow. We have stormwater management regulations we need to follow. The state, um. State manages those. And our job is to, we can't just. Deny someone an, uh, uh, application or permit. We have to make them build it to our zoning bylaws, and if it meets those zoning bylaws, there's really, the town has no. Yeah, no, I'm just, I'm just explaining position, yeah.
Excuse me. The engineer is on.
Yeah, does, does he even really have anything to talk about?
Quick questions, I mean, I guess you can just.
There is.
It's Mike Dean.
Yeah, Mike Dean, yes.
Yes, I just logged on. My apologies. I can, I can, uh, go through a quick presentation. My apologies for being late.
Uh, but just to, do we, do you have any, um, anything back from Jeff?
No, I do not. I had reached out to him, I believe. The first time I reached out, he was on vacation and. Upon his arrival, Jeff did send me an email saying that he would reach out and he would follow up once he had his report. And that was probably about a week or so ago, maybe even a little less.
I'll contact him tomorrow. He's probably, probably done some time. Unfortunately, missed the meeting date, but maybe.
Mike, maybe you wanna talk to the residents about the proposed drainage?
Sure, I mean, just, just as, uh, you were just mentioning, um, we can go through the drainage. I can, uh, try to share my screen here.
Yep, go ahead. It's open.
You guys see that?
Do I have to do anything on my end? It's not like Zoom, then.
About there, can you see that? Right here.
Eric, do you wanna take a ride to his house and help?
You can't, hold on, shit. It says it's sharing, so is that on there, the cover sheet?
Maybe cause I'm sharing.
Are you still sharing?
I might be. I'm not. We have expert.
There it is.
Okay.
All right, just try it again. Somebody's sharing the meeting.
I am.
Okay, I can hit stop sharing here and try it again?
Yeah. Oh yeah, you're sharing the wrong screen, Mike. You were sharing the actual meeting.
Okay.
There we go.
Okay, sorry about that.
That's okay.
So we'll just go through this quick. My apologies for, um, showing up late. Site thirty five Cape Road, as we all know. Here's the existing conditions plan here. The site is a four point one acre site. Along this area here. As you had just mentioned, to the north is the soccer field. And to the west is located here is the, um, solar field. The proposal. Proposal is shown here. Twenty six thousand six hundred and fifty square foot building shown along this area here. Associated parking, front loaded in this area here, some parking down around back, and as. As, uh, mentioned previously, emergency access around the building. The site slopes from Route one forty area of the eastern side towards the western side, which was just discussed down into the. Solar field shown here. This is the solar field. There's been some work with the abutters and the zone lines. As the planning board may remember, I wasn't involved, but there was a. Similar, similar use, similar project. Designed and approved in this area here, building configuration slightly different than what's shown here, but similar with the setbacks and. The abutters and things of that nature with the zone, so. They've worked with the abutters and this is, this is what we're proposing here. Through that process, this is how the building is shaped up. Once again, twenty six thousand six hundred and fifty square feet. If we move to this plan here. I know we were just talking about drainage. I, I can't hear the, uh, person asking the question or what the questions were, but obviously it was to the. Pertaining to drainage, the pre and post conditions, as mentioned before, will match. The pre and post conditions to this property line. You can see there's quite an elaborate area shown here as proposed drainage. That is all the proposed grade and associated with the detention basins. There's also another one here. They're, they're similar in nature to what was originally designed and approved the first time around for the previous site plan. However, the, it, it is slightly different and a little bit larger on this area with a larger four bay. Site drains, once again, keeping, keeping in, in line with the way the site drains currently. From the east to the west. Drainage will be, will be caught in catch basins and swales and directed to these detention basins, matching the pre and post. Um, pre and post flow rates to this western property line, which is required, as you mentioned, under your. Bylaws and mass state law, as you can't increase the flows going off into somebody else's property. Pretty extensive and elaborate detention basin there. The site will be serviced by. Downwater shown tapping into Cape Road here. And fire protection being provided and onsite septic, which would, is located down in the western portion of the site. Once again, we'll work with the consultant, uh, who will review all the numbers and the drainage, if that's the issue or the concern at this moment right now. Answering that question is, there will be an outside consultant reviewing, reviewing all the drainage and drainage analysis that's submitted, but. Certainly set up to, to mitigate pre and post development to this western portion. And yeah, so with fire protection, hydrant showing up in the front area. Domestic will be connected to the rear area here and underground electric. And that's about it. And we'll, we'll certainly work with through the, uh. We'll work with the consultant Jeff and work through, uh, any of his issues and concerns moving forward.
Sounds good, Mike.
Mike, could you show me, uh, you probably, I, you probably went right by it, but the septic, the post septic?
Yeah, down in this area here.
Okay, I see, yeah.
Originally, it was up front, but we were able to move it down back, get it away from the road and get it a big hump off the, on the road.
All right. Yes, sir.
It's gonna have to be a hundred feet away from any well or other septic system.
It's, that's. Doesn't matter. I mean, if it's, well, that's the law. It doesn't, it's gonna hold as far as the water, if some of that area doesn't purge, it is. And, you know, you could have backup down there. Um, and the other thing is, uh, retention. Is there gonna be a culvert, no standing water, and what kind of material is gonna be riff ramp that's smoking here?
Mike, could you hear that?
Yeah, I'm having a tough time hearing those, those comments, but, uh, the detention basin, is it gonna be a culvert? I'm not sure what that pertains to, but there will be some drainage. Catch basins and some drain pipe that will be connecting to the, to the detention basins. And then there are some overflows to handle these different storm events. And it, it, it's required to capture, first flush four bay is set up here. And then water will, and, and it is designed to be up above, you know, all, all the stormwater management regulations are adhered to. So, sorry about that.
Mike, what he asked, what kind of materials are we talking about in the detention base?
Sorry about that, the phone was ringing. Um. The basins will be in in the area, you have to be two feet above gra- uh groundwater, so. The bottoms are set up to be at least two feet above groundwater. And then the material will be ordinary fill that'll be brought in to to create the burns. The bottoms will be scarified and any top and subsoil will be all removed, like a typical basin. And it'll be shaped, you know, with clean granular fill.
And then his other first concern was the proximity of the proposed leach field and the basins.
To the to the abutting site.
I'm sorry, could you say that again? I'm sorry.
I he thought originally it was supposed to be over by the soccer field. Uh, the original was up front. The original plan had it up front.
On one forty.
On one forty.
Was it was this the same sketch rendering that was presented back in?
No.
The beginning of the year.
Yes, slight slight variations to it, but that was not the. The one that we looked at it like uh.
This is.
Close to it, but slow, yeah.
What are the differences?
Uh, I don't have the other one right in front of me. Mike, what was the, remember the first drawing we had?
We had office, we had office doors and everything was on the on Eric's side of the of the building. And then we worked things out with the your butters and we ended up moving every everything, so it's a lot more private on the backside.
I was never consulted, so I don't know who what he was saying about he worked things out with the butters.
They directed by her.
Only one about her.
Hold on, hold on a second, hold on. I I spoke to you. Guys, all that same, I said, if you have any concerns, contact you. I showed you that that design that we had, that we were still slightly working on, so the same that you weren't.
There was all preliminary information that you were providing to us.
Yep, and then here's the.
Yeah, and then, as I said, I was asking, you know, how things. What's the differences?
Yeah, the very, the building is the same size. Pretty similar to being. What you saw is, other than a final adjustments, maybe a septic system, we moved. The septic to the back of the property, if we were able to get a a perk test on there. It's not, it's directly behind the building. All the drainage is down the bottom.
Yeah, it's down to the bottom left-hand side towards the houses.
No, that's all drainage. It's right behind the back of the building.
The septic and the drains.
You're doing good.
Oh, I'm sorry. With any with any of the previous uh sketches and. Plans that went out earlier to work through some of the issues with. The butter or the butters, I didn't meet with them, so if I said a butters and it was one person. That, you know, I apologize for that, and that wasn't my intent, that they went and worked with fifty people, but the. The way the the way these things take place is you start with concepts and you work through the process. And this is the final plan. I would say the biggest change with all the sketches that we've proposed and or. Have given to Damon would be the relocation of the septic system would be probably the biggest change. Other than that. I think the intent has always been the same. The drainage has always been in the low point, because. It has to be in the low point of the site, so I don't know if the sketches showed that prior to, but. You know, the the drainage has always been planned and designed to be on the western portion of the site, as it that's the way it drains now.
Thank you, Mike. I wanna rail this meeting in, cuz we're getting off topic. We're talking about something that happened months ago. This planning board isn't responsible for what happened back then. It's responsible for the application that's in front of us now. We don't have our engineering report back right now, so. Questions of whether this meets our zoning or doesn't meet our zoning, I can't answer for you today, because we don't have his report. I will say, taking an opportunity to show this to you. You're welcome to come to the next meeting when we uh.
The engineer will be here.
Engineer will be here and we'll be able to get better answers for you. But this conversation here is just gonna end up bad if we can continue down the rabbit hole. So I'm uh, I'm gonna put it at a halt for now. We're gonna continue the public hearing till next month. Uh, hopefully, I'm sure we will have the engineers report by then. And remember, this engineer represents us. He tries to take care of this. He's not here today. He'll be at the next meeting. Unfortunately, you know what, I mean. You know, it doesn't only work for Mendy. And sometimes when we give an application, he doesn't have an opportunity to get it done by the very next meeting. So, and that's the situation now, so we'll continue this to the September meeting. And I'm sure we'll have all the information from him at that.
And another thing is that he's doing his job. Looking at it over. I don't, we definitely don't wanna rush them. It probably would have been a second meeting anyway. That's what we use.
TV, you know what, be one of the. They want a premier engineering uh companies in central Mass.
He's the only engineer.
Well, why why would we go to any, why would we go to somebody else if we got a guy?
Planning board.
Hope he'll use them, much produced, wish to use them. Why would we go to someone else if we got someone that's? You know what, he's gotta go out to the property, he's gotta do a whole bunch of engineering work in the field. Then he's gotta come back and create a report, you know what? Well, that isn't the way it works. It's just the opening meeting to the public.
Bill, Bill, with all due respect. Jeff Walsh is an excellent engineer and extremely responsible. And he just didn't have his report ready. That's why he's not. I, you know, he was on vacation. I didn't even know that. I mean, he wouldn't tell me, what's none of my business, but.
I don't want him to rush it either. I want him to look at it and if there's any any issues, friend, I want it to be addressed.
We just need the motion.
September ninth. September ninth at six.
Alright, wait a second. Uh, yeah, it's got a lot of conversation going on. It shouldn't be. So you made the motion. Continue it to September ninth. So I have a second. All those in favor?
September ninth, six P M. Hopefully, we'll have some. I can't make them, it's fine. I asked, and it won't move forward without them. Do you know what you mean?
Alright, there's probably gonna be a couple more meetings anyways.
Bonnie, can you answer that?
I would say to start the project. Oh, yeah, hopefully by the spring, yes. So we will, we'll try not to make them. Yeah, we have, I mean, if the if it gets, weather gets bad, we're not.
We don't have snow anymore.
Are we good? What's that? There's no sellers or anything. It's just all slab, so it should be very simple. Be well, we got city water. Fire, for the fire, for the fire system.
Yeah, we're also, they're also.
We're done with this. Yeah, we can, we can, we can talk about this at the meeting. This is over.
Yeah. Um, the one other uh. Issue that I want to discuss was that everybody take note of uh. Can you uh? The public hearing has been continued. You guys can talk outside.
Yeah, no problem.
Um, but um. Did you guys uh receive Jack's uh? Report on the changes that have occurred with the state um. State accessory dwellings are now as of right up to nine hundred square feet. Your additional.
Dylan sent that, I made.
I don't know if she's copying in the whole order or not, but. These are the type of changes that are going, there's more coming too. Um, multi-unit dwelling is gonna be making a huge push. Um, in the state of Massachusetts, so. The next round of things, what's that?
That's gonna change things quite a bit.
Well, considering we can never get an accessory dwelling by law passed, and now it's as of right. It's gonna be quite a big change for the town of Menon. They're they're gonna be dealing with density issues and. Um, you know, like Menon only allows duplexes. The state of Massachusetts looks to push this to a minimum four to six family.
Gotta put them somewhere. What did North have? Continue?
Mistakenly put on the agenda.
Oh, okay, sorry.
We're good. Let me give, just need one more motion, motion to adjourn.
I got a funny story with with this A D U. This A D U bylaw, you know, it's now by right. So I tell my wife. And she tells our daughter. And now she wants to build an A D U on my daughter's property.
Well, I'll tell you, you're gonna be moving. You're gonna see a lot of that. I mean, nine hundred square feet. Is uh.
That's that's bigger than my house with the cake.
That's pretty big. It's not bad. I could live there.
If you're a mother-in-law or or just. You got a daughter you wanna put into?
Yeah, by and by the way, there's no family obligation.
Yeah.
So you can put an in-law, you can put an in-law up to nine hundred square.
Nine hundred square feet.
As of right.
By right. Go get a building permit.
Signed last week.
It's not even an in-law, it's not even in-law.
No, it isn't. It's the A D U assisted dwelling. What's that?
It doesn't have to be a relative.
No, it doesn't, yeah, it's not, no, it's an accessory dwelling.
Yeah, for that, I'll move in.
Or rent.
Yeah, they 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 put no parameters on.
Now, that might change, though. They'll they'll start developing.
Rules are gonna get wider in Massachusetts. This administration, the last six, seven years. Um, has been moving in this direction. That's why you see all these apartment buildings going up, cuz.
I don't think we voted on adjourning F Y I.
Right.
Oh. You don't need him.
See you on the ninth. Take it home. Oh, what everybody do? Gail sent us a card. Thanks for her.
Hey, how do you know this? Do you keep yours or do you? Do you keep yours?
Yeah, I know, I I did uh.
Like everything else you did.
On thirty five Cape's special permit.
Good night, guys.
Because I've done the rule of necessity, am I?
Good night.
Or can I still abstain? I have to vote?
They need for, they need for both.
For positive. Oh, yeah, it would be.
Okay.
I wanted to ask them that question, I.
I wanted to understand that, cuz I I want, I want to remove as much, you know. Exactly.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Yes.
And here's why I don't. I meant it. I expected to talk to somebody and I didn't know it was just refusing. But when I went through the file today, I don't know why they're applying for the special permit. I don't know what the special. Alright, that's what. Okay, yeah, you're gonna have to vote. Um, you know what? No, let's. I'm worried they're gonna steal them. They do an expert. Yes. Yeah, listen, you're anymore, I guess. I have to shut this off. I don't like it.
So we have a keyboard and mouse and everything?
I mean, there's so many steps to.